Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our notice of... This is a public hearing that we're having on a special assessment for public improvements in the City of Opaco, Wisconsin concerning Runway Drive. I do call this public hearing to order. Sandy, you want to take a roll for us?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Deb Vensky. Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczatski.
Here.
Dave Shamble. Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood. Jillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Dave Shamble is present. Eight present, we have a quorum.
Okay, and the purpose of the hearing. Sandy, do you have that in front of you?
Yeah, which you want to read it?
Thanks. The purpose of the hearing, please take notice that the governing body of the City of Opaco, Wisconsin has declared its intention to exercise its police power in accordance with subsection 66.0703 of the Wisconsin statutes to levy a special assessment upon the following properties for the benefit conferred upon the property by the installation of approximately 1,800-foot, eight-inch public sewer main traversing overland along property fronting on the Runway Drive in the City of Opaca. There is a table on there that lists the individuals and their parcel numbers, and they've all been notified and actually been talked to by our staff. And this public hearing is to listen to the public on whether they're in favor of this or any testimony in opposition to that. So at this time, we'll take testimony in favor of doing this project. We would ask that any individual that would like to speak in favor, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your time to three minutes or less. Anybody that would like to speak in favor of this public works project? Thank you.
My name is Andy Schmidt. I'm from Schmidt Bolt Lifts and Docks. We are the developer that has an offer to purchase land along Runway Drive. Our purpose would be to open a store there similar to our other locations, selling bolt lifts and docks and waterfront accessories. I would like to go on record as saying I'm in favor of the proposed sewer expansion. I believe it's consistent with the zoning that's out there. Water is already available. As far as developing it, it makes sense to me, and our offer being contingent on sewer, if sewer isn't available, we would be looking at putting in onsite system approved by the county. It's my understanding that there's an existing plan without a timeline to put sewer into that area anyway. So for us to pay the money to put in onsite system and eventually abandon that system, pay an assessment to hook into city sewer, to me doesn't make sense. We'd rather get it taken care of all at once. And again, with the zoning that's out there, I would say most businesses, retail stores, are going to be looking to have city sewer available. And it would seem to me that the proposal services a good chunk of land for the cost. Our company is willing to bear a larger portion than what our land area would be. I think we're on record for a little over $33,000 that we're willing to shoulder because we know we are the first ones out there, and we're kind of pushing for this. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you. Any other testimony in favor? Any other testimony in favor of the subject? If not, we'll take testimony in opposition to this project. Again, if there's anybody that would like to give testimony in opposition, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Any opposition? Okay, do we have any rebuttal in favor? Henry, did you want to say anything? Okay. With that said, nobody else, I do declare this hearing closed at 5:47 PM. We will take this matter up at our regular council meeting, which will start right at 6 o'clock. So we do stand in recess for about 13 minutes here.
You're on.
Okay, welcome, everybody, again, to our regular scheduled city council meeting for the first Tuesday of the month. I do call this meeting to order, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll have Sandy read the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with the Wisconsin state statutes so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thanks, Sandy. And would you also take a roll for us?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Deb Vensky. Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczatski.
Here.
Dave Shamble.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Jillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Sandy. We have the consent agenda, which starts on the first page of your... of the packet. Few items on there. We have that one ordinance, which is prohibiting parking on the west side of State Street from Mill Street to Badger Street, and all the other items, of course, are informational. Is there any items that council would like to see moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? If not, we'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So move.
Can we approve the consent agenda as printed?
Motion by Keeland, I'm sorry, I took his. And second by Lockwood, thank you. We approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Under the regular agenda, I think we just had one handout.
Mm-hmm.
And that was the South Park Phase One.
Yep.
And you should all have that on your desk. Otherwise, we need, again, a motion to approve the regular agenda with that one addition.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda with that one addition.
Second.
We have a motion by Hackett, second by Shamble, that we approve the regular agenda with the one addition, the South Park Phase One project. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Non-agenda items and announcements, we have a thank you note from the family of Bernice Krieger, informational, and then we also have a thank you letter from the Community Blood Center Incorporated. Of course, they used the City Hall property to run their blood drive, which I hear went very well. Under action items, then, we have Resolution Number 1331, 2013. This is a preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy special assessments under municipal police power pursuant to subsection 66.0703 of the Wisconsin statutes. We did have the public hearing earlier, we did have one individual that spoke in favor of that, nobody that spoke in opposition to that. Henry, you want to...
This is a typical process that we use when we put in public improvements and the decision to special assess it. The statutes require that we address a few things in the resolution, which are in here. Not really an attachment to the resolution, Sandy, when we filed this away, but I just wanted to give you some information over, you know, project map, and then estimated cost, and then how it would be tentatively assessed. Now, what happens is there's an action item next to award engineering agreement. Once we get... assuming this adopts, then we'll get an engineer on board and have a more precise report with tighter numbers, and actually, we'll come back with a final resolution with the actual assessments attached to it. It will be within the next six weeks, probably, four to six weeks, for the final resolution.
Any discussion by council? Motion?
Make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 1331.
Second. We have a motion by Hackett, second by Keeland, that we approve of Resolution Number 1331. This is a resolution, preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy a special assessment. Any discussion? If not, Sandy, will you call the roll?
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Dave Shamble.
Aye.
Scott Porczatski.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
And Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next, then, we have a Runway Drive sanitary sewer extension for professional service agreement with Omni and Associates Incorporated. Did you... John?
Well, John kind of took the ball on this one. All right. The reason we selected Omni for this is they've done all the... performed all the engineering services on our utility project out here, which is a $6 million extension for the TIF. Omni was involved in the design of the bypass project, the runway project, the frontage roads, the entire area. So they've got quite a bit of survey control, and as you can see from the... their proposed compensation is pretty minimal. It's laid out that the city would provide construction engineering services, our crews, our staff will actually perform that, they will provide staking. So the proposal would provide for survey design and property research, as laid in Article Five, laid out in Article Five, plan specs permitting with the DNR, bidding services, which is sending out plans and reclaiming those plans and recommending a low bidder, and then staking, as we stated. So then, again, as I said, we would perform the construction inspection services, and if we need any additional assistance, we would utilize Omni. So as a staff, we are recommending that we do proceed with this agreement, and we will get started right away. I don't have a timetable at this point, but this would be fall construction. The design should go pretty quickly, the construction should go pretty quickly, and we're hoping this moves along quite well.
John, do we have a... an amount?
A nine... Those amounts total up to $9,000.
Yeah, so we... Okay.
Yeah, it's in Article Five Compensation under A.
All right, on page 21. Okay. So up to $9,000. Okay, any questions? Motion? Anybody?
I would move that we utilize Omni Associates for the sewer extension professional services plans for Runway Drive sanitary sewer.
And an amount not to exceed...
$9,000.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mayo, a second by Hackett, that we approve the agreement with the City of Opaco and Omni and Associates Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $9,000 to do the Runway Drive sanitary sewer extension project. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, next, this is your handout. We had the author... this is to talk about the South Park Phase One project and give staff the authorization to proceed with that Phase One project. So Henry and Aaron, and whoever else is involved, John?
Yeah. As the mayor finished up, that was a good segue, what we're seeking is just permission to proceed with the bidding. Staff currently has an 85% completion set of drawings that they're commenting on and getting back to the consultant, MSA, to keep on schedule. We will do that review quickly. But I'm going to... you've seen a lot of this before, but just maybe more purposes of the audience, attached to your... that first sheet is kind of a concept layout. As you know, we had to kind of pull back on our original concept to make it fit the budget, and you can see kind of the site layout for the pavilion or shelter. There's a floor plan through the process since early July. We have increased the size of the shell of the building to account for another toilet in the women's bathroom and a urinal in the men's to provide more facilities, particularly with the idea that we're going to be tearing down the existing facilities. And then there's attached an elevation, some elevations of the... how this will look. And then the next sheets are prepared by the consultant, and they're calling in an estimate of probable cost. And there's a number of items that are yet to be determined until we bid it, but the cover page kind of addresses the kind of overall cost. They looked at the building principally, and their very last sheet is a revised schedule. Our plan would be to start construction very early in October. We'll suspend it over the winter, do what we can in the winter, and then pick back up in the spring, and then have it open for the Fourth of July weekend. The consultant is estimated... if you want to go back to the cover sheet, we are proposing for the city to serve as the general contractor, and I've worked with the city attorney and our insurer to make sure that we understand all the implications of that, and we think we're fine and can proceed that way. Could save us up to $40,000 on the project for us acting as a GC. But you can see, right now, again, these are just preliminary, but we're at a shelter building of 325 and site work of 110. We've allocated $80,000 for playground, we have an allowance for furniture, 25. We thought of a nice flagpole in the area would be appropriate. We want to do something for the donors, and we're not quite sure what, so we have a placeholder in there of $5,000. Landscaping of 20, which would include irrigation, the engineering fee of 66,250, and soil testing, and then we have a small contingency, which is about 3% of the construction. So we've got a project of about $650,000, and then below, you can see the potential funding sources. DNR grant of 339,150, donor cash of 230, $230,000, city park fees of $20,000, water fund of $25,000. And then two potential sources that, given where we hope, think the bids will come in, we wouldn't need to tap these sources. But once all the bids come in and we come forward with a recommendation of award, obviously, we're going to have to address the money piece. So I've just listed those as potentials, so we have, at least with the project projections, enough income or enough funding sources to cover the estimated cost. Now, the city is proposing, or staff is proposing, we act as a general. And you can see on MSA's information, there will actually be 13 separate bid packages. There are things in these bid packages that we feel very comfortable of taking on, and we'll just have to evaluate whether we want to do those with city crews. So the shelter building of 325, $325,000 could very well be much less. We could, you know, again, install trusses, you can see here, we could do some of the landscaping, install some of the playgrounds. So there are a lot of opportunities for the city and volunteers to get involved in this project to cut on the cost. Now, the really positive upbeat thing on us acting as a general is we will very likely have all local bidders or region bidders for these various components. So I think that's very good for our local economy. Plus, it will help us if we undertake some of the work. It'll save money, but we'll also be able to use the in-kind for our grant match, which would then allow us to maybe do additional work in the park kind of outside this project. Again, these are... till we get the bids, we won't have a real clear picture, but these are possibilities. And another savings that we've identified, it's not a huge savings, it's probably a couple thousand dollars, but if we direct purchase a lot of the materials, the roofs and trusses and that kind of thing, we can save a little money by not having to pay sales tax. So this is a real fun project, because there's a lot of opportunity for us to attack it in a lot of different ways to save costs, but also allow opportunity for local contractors to get a bit of this work. Aaron, John, is there anything you'd like to address? I mean, ultimately, we just want to get permission to go to bid.
Henry, I think you've covered it pretty well there. If there's any questions of me, or Henry, or John?
I have one.
Go ahead, Scott.
With the staff in kind, our crews doing work, when and how exactly going to be decided? After the bids, and then we're going to say... How's that going to work?
Well, we'll get all the bids and do an evaluation with our consultant, and come forward with a recommendation, and the recommendation of award would have, as is talked about here, you know, we might not award the bid for the resinous flooring, the bid packet I. Maybe that's something our crews can put down, and we'll go right through, and we'll go, okay, we're going to award this section to this company, this little bid, this section of this. City's going to do this section. So now, with us acting as construction manager, that's not... you know, that takes effort and energy, and we understand that. Kind of the way I think we've envisioned it is Roger would be more of the eyes on the ground, or street superintendent, kind of the day-to-day stuff. You know, Brennan, with his project managed experience, would handle the various contracts and make sure they're handled and change orders. And then I see Gene and I sort of on the back office handling the money and doing the grant stuff, because we've got to keep track of the grant stuff, keep, you know, all in-kind hours, we've got to track all that. So it's going to be a team effort to get this done. But I think it's a manageable project. We all feel that, it's a team consensus.
If you've got enough time, John, you know, that's what I'm saying, it's going to take away from your crews. This is a pretty big project, if you take a lot of it on there, you know, you might have to.
Well, we do have some experience.
Yeah.
There was construction in...
Definitely.
Brainerd Bridge Park on Bailey Street was constructed by a city and park crews a few years ago, and I know work recently down in Riverview Park. So it's... there's definitely sections in here that we're focusing in on.
Yeah.
Water main work is something that we are interested in. You know, we know we can handle that, and the rough carpentry, bid G. So there's definitely things that we would be interested in looking at, seeing what the price is, and if we... you're right, I mean, right, there are some things that won't take place then, and what 's the trade-off, so we'll take that into account as well.
Yeah, there's some elements, council, that we have kind of packaged as alternate bids that would be additions to the project. And the one, I think that, I'm speaking for myself, but I heard multiple comments on our team, is that we'd like to see that Upper Lakeside Terrace be done as part of the original project. And again, depending on where those bids come in, you know, there might be elements where we chunk that up, and some of it's contracted, and maybe some of it, we do, we just reject it, but then go back and maybe reconfigure it and get somebody to do some of it, and then we do some of it ourselves. So I think that terrace is going to be really a nice complement to the whole project. We'd really like to get that in there. But again, the bids will be the bids, and we'll have to come forward with a recommendation for you. And that will happen...
Let me see.
Awarding the contracts on September 17th, one month, or six weeks.
Okay. Paul, go ahead.
Two questions. Henry, has the donor cash been all committed to? And also, the city park fees, is that... is that money coming from the park and rec that was from other programs that we'd have to replace somehow? Or, I guess, what is the source of those city park fees?
Well, the donor cash, yes, is committed to, because we have a letter on file, we had to submit that as part of the grant, and that is committed. The city park fees, when we've had developments in the past, residential developments, they have to pay 200 bucks, I think, per lot into this fee, and we've been accumulating these park fees since, I guess, the 90s. We thought, well, as we're trying to make a budget work, that this is a, you know, a pretty major renovation, that that would be a reasonable use of those funds. But ultimately, when the bids are awarded, you'll have to decide whether you want to use those fees and those things too. It's just a idea. Yes?
I'm just confused. In the notes portion, it says it excludes playground area and equipment, and excludes irrigation system, but it kind of looked like it included those things in the cost.
Well, what I did... they just addressed the building and the site work principally, and you can see on the cover sheet, I'm picking up the building cost site work, but I'm also adding all the things that they said in their notes that they aren't addressing.
Sorry, it just says it excludes irrigation system, but then on the front, it says it...
See, their estimate doesn't include the park and our playground irrigation and all these other elements.
We need a motion, Brian?
We do.
I'll make a motion to authorize to proceed with bidding for the South Park Phase One project. Second.
Motion by Shamble, second by Lockwood, that we authorize staff to go forward with the bidding process for the South Park Phase One project. Any other discussion? If not, Sandy, will you call the roll?
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Scott Porczatski.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Dave Shamble.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett. Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we have nothing under unfinished business or new business, communications, recommendations of the mayor, we'll do that at the next meeting this time. So we're looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Keeland, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting. Remember, this is... will be the third Tuesday of the month, Tuesday, August 20th, 2013, and also notice the time change has been changed to 6:00 PM. Of course, subject to call for any other meeting in the in-between. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. We are adjourned at 6:25 PM. Thanks, everybody, for attending and watching.